Back to bank applicants.
We're good.
Yes.
All right, we'll call the order at seven oh five P M. I will take comments from the audience. Nobody. All right. Uh, remarks on the chair, I don't really have many remarks, only to wish that everybody's having a nice summer. Administration, teachers, school committee. Um, and I'm looking forward to our next meeting and then our offsite.
It is our next one.
It is our next speaker, that's right, at the end of August. Uh, so we have a little bit more time off between now and then, and we'll do some prep work. Otherwise, um, I hope everyone's having a good summer. So with that, we'll jump into the response to the MTA Climate Survey. Before we do, I just want to remind the school committee that we asked Dr. Harvey and Jeff to put together a response to the MTA Climate Survey. So that's what we'll see today. Um, but we did get some guidance from council that we just need to be careful about not talking about specific positions or specific people that might be referenced in the climate survey. Um, and so with that, I just ask you guys to be aware of your questions and comments. So with that, Mike?
Thank you. Um, I'll sort of elaborate a little bit on what you just said. It's actually the entire executive leadership team that's, that's worked on this plan. We started meeting, uh, you know, middle of June and have met, I think, just about every two weeks all summer, which is not a normal practice for us, um, to really kind of talk about this and, uh, discuss how uh, we want to respond, um, to the survey, uh, that was given to us by the MTA last spring. Um, we also met with MTA leadership, uh, last Tuesday, uh, and they provided some, uh, uh, you know, some, some comments on some of the language. Um, but you know, really what you're seeing here is what the leadership team put together, executive leadership team. Um, so, you know, I, you know, union leadership did not have a whole lot. They, they reviewed this with us and seemed to like what, what they saw. Um, so let's kind of jump into this. We took, uh, you know, this based on the themes, uh, and looked at, you know, consistent, visible and supportive leadership at the school.
I have a quick question, yeah. Can you clarify who exactly is part of the executive leadership team?
So the executive leadership team would be myself.
Yep.
Uh, Jeff Sands, Assistant Superintendent.
Yep.
Brad Denton, Assistant Superintendent.
Yep.
Katie Donardo, High School Principal.
Yep.
Kevin Seer, Director of Teaching and Learning. And Phil McManus, Middle School Principal.
Okay, thank you.
E L T is what we call.
Yep.
I have one, one asked question before we get into it. Is this a regular occurrence? Is this something that was?
First time ever done.
Okay, thanks.
At least to my knowledge, looking, looking at some people who have a little more history than I do and so. All right, so looking at a visibility of leadership. So what we've decided is, uh, we're going to create a practice of structured leadership walkthroughs. Um, we can actually use, um, some of the new language in the collective bargaining agreement about all we had instituted unlimited feedback visits. Uh, and so we'll be able to participate with the members of the, uh, the principals and assistant principals in leadership walkthroughs. Uh, more visible in the hallways, classrooms and common areas. Uh, but specifically what we're really looking at here is this walk through schedule of actually getting into classrooms. Um, and so having two members of the executive leadership team and a department head. And you can see, try to map out a schedule for this so we can make sure it gets in the calendar. You know, if you don't put it in the book, it doesn't get done. So we're looking at this and having a real schedule here that says um, on these dates and times, uh, days of the weeks and times that that's where we're going to be. And, um, you know, and we're going to structure these, these visits. Um, and so, you know, again, this isn't for necessarily evaluation, but more of a relationship building piece. And as I said, we have this new uh, component of the collective bargaining agreement where we can do these non evaluative feedback visits. And this kind of follows right into that. So we can follow this up, um, with some feedback, uh, to the staff member. Um, and this also gets us, I think, um, you know, it's another discussion that we've had around evaluations, trying to get our leadership team calibrated, um, so that and it, you know, with one department head, it would give the same evaluation or a similar evaluation and see, look, be looking for similar things, uh, as opposed to another department head and having that discussion with the principals uh, and their director of teaching and learning and assistant superintendent for student services. So that we're all kind of on the same page and we can, you know, kind of communicate that with one voice about what we think is important in the classroom. Uh, one of the other pieces was hiring. Um, and just as a sort of an example, we had two uh, leadership positions that we filled this summer, the science, technology and engineering department head and social studies department head. And in both cases, uh, we had hiring committees for those positions that consisted of faculty members, uh, in, from both schools, uh, from those respective departments, as well as the appropriate administrators, uh, the director of teaching and learning, the principals, uh, other, and another department head. Um, each committee recommended a finalist candidate to meet with the executive leadership team. Uh, and in both cases, the recommended finalist was appointed to the position. Um, also with teaching positions, we have, uh, all those positions, yeah, Chris?
Can you tell us a little bit about the folks you hired?
Kevin, you want to talk about the two? Kevin did an announcement actually to faculty last week.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we've got, um, it's a real good mix of both, you know, leadership and extensive teachings experience of both of those roles. Um, they were, I would say, both candidates recited for their curriculum expertise, knowledge as well. Um, but like Mike said, these were, uh, you know, this was pretty unanimous in terms of we had great representation at the table and to really see that process through and have that same support at the executive leadership team level. I think it's just nice going in, you have full support. Uh, you know, in terms of what we're looking for.
So we can't believe there's no announcement of names or?
I could tell you, so, uh, it's science, Kami Cox. Um, I'm just going to read from this. Kami has over a decade of experience in science education, curriculum development and teacher mentorship. She currently, or it's leaving a position of the Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Science, uh, pre K to twelve in the Lynn Public Schools, uh, where she leads district-wide science initiatives and supports instructional improvement across all grade levels. Prior to her current role, prior to that role, Kami spent nearly 10 years at Essex Tech uh, as a biology teacher, department facilitator and an induction, teacher induction supervisor. She mentored new educators, led professional development focused on effective instruction and curriculum alignment. And in addition to her K to twelve leadership, uh, she was a program supervisor and an adjunct professor at Endicott College, uh, where she supported pre-service teachers through coursework and field. And in social studies, it's Renee Young. Uh, Renee brings 17 years of teaching experience at both the middle and high school levels. Uh, most recently, she's the classroom teacher and a curriculum support specialist at Bill Rika High School. Uh, in this role, she led P D, professional development, supported curriculum planning and assisted in managing departmental logistics. Um, she's integrated the civic action project into the eighth and eleventh grade curriculum and facilitated student presentations at both local and state-wide levels. Um, her colleagues referred to her ability to understand all perspectives while bringing a calmness to conversations. So.
Thank you.
I think we got two good hires there.
Just a quick question. Um, would you say that the process for hiring these two department heads was different than in the past?
No.
This is what we've always done.
Yeah. We've always done and actually had Brad. We, Brad gets to be the historian here and I was like, it's a lot different than what was, what was going on before six years ago. And he said, no.
Yeah, no, I think it was consistent. Good.
Do you have a good applicant pool?
Uh, applicant pool.
Like, was it large?
It was small.
It's no. But all it takes is one.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I was highly impressed just with like, for a summer hiring for that social studies position. I think we had four or five teachers between the middle and high school, not including admin. So they all wanted to take the time to get a burn. That's, that's hard to make love in the summer. Yeah, so I felt good about that.
And then for hiring, looking at teaching positions, all hiring committees include faculty members from the appropriate department, the department head and the building principal. Uh, hiring committees develop a recommendation regarding a preferred candidate. And then the building principal makes the final recommendation by state law. The principal does hiring in their own schools. Uh, this year we hired, let's see, one math teacher at the high school and a drama position that we haven't actually officially hired yet. Um, but really, we didn't have a lot of hiring this year in terms of teachers.
These teacher.
Social studies to fill.
So, um, we, you're enumerating things that you're doing based on the feedback that was in the survey. Uh, we kind of focused for a second on hiring itself.
Yep.
I heard that it's very similar, if not the same, as the, as the process that we've been following all along. I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to recall, what was the feedback in the MTA survey that drove us to enumerate something along the lines of hiring here? And what was, what was the gap? Like, if we were doing, if we were doing this all along, then are we addressing the feedback that was in the survey?
I guess I would have a, a hard time addressing it. So the feedback in the survey was, from what I'm remembering, wanting to actually go through the entire candidate pool and pick the candidates that were interviewed, which is not, you know, something, as I, as I said earlier, this is a, all of these committees advise whoever the hiring person, whoever the person is in the role that makes that hire.
Right.
They don't really make the hire themselves. Um, one of the things that we see with, um, nowadays with, you know, being able, being, collecting these resumes online through school spring, which is a, the online-based process. We get, you know, for that social studies position, how many resumes did you get, Phil?
Oh, I got probably thirty-five.
I thought, wasn't that, was it thirty-five? Thirty-five to forty resumes. The issue though is then we, we go through those and because this is a, you know, an online program that's not really, that takes, in order to apply for a position, you upload your stuff and then you click, click, click. We get a huge number of candidates that just aren't even qualified for the job. They don't meet those minimum qualifications. Um, and then the other piece is we have, we have a budget. So we have financial constraints, you know, which you've heard Jeff say this before, that we look at master step five as that target. And so, you know, that's sort of the, the initial process that we do as, you know, the principals and a teaching position would do principals and department heads and say, who do we want to talk to based on those parameters that we have?
Yep.
That's, I think when we spoke to the MTA too, we all, like, really good discussion. We touched on this one because this one's tricky because not everybody is involved in the hiring process. Uh, if it's social studies, you might have two social studies teachers out of twenty. So year over year, you don't have, you're trying to bring the same people and say, hey, can you give me a day at supper? So it's different person, so it's just, uh, we, I think we all agreed it was kind of
weird.
They knew exactly also the process, where, where that kind of turned to look negative on.
So I think, you know, as we go forward, one of the things that I'd recommend we, we do is, I mean, I think that we've documented here is great. It highlights that there was inclusivity with the teachers and the, and a hiring committee to go hire, um, some staff. It's consistent with what we've done for the last six years, so maybe it doesn't address the root of what they were concerned about, but it sounds like there was a discussion and you guys have adjudicated some extent at least, um, on this topic. Or if that's not the case, you've got justification for taking the approach that you're taking. Right, and I, I personally don't disagree with sort of what you're saying, but it would be good to document, I think, not just the fact that we established the same exact process that we've been doing for a while, but we're either changing or we're not changing, and here's why we're not changing.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, does anybody else?
Yeah, I think the process is inclusive, uh, you know, I think, as I said, we try to be respectful of people's time. Uh, in this case, when you have committees of upwards of 10 people and you're trying to interview, you know, a good number of candidates, sometimes you think, you know, some people have been on these committees from this, from the school committee, no, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're looking at two nights that we're asking people to kind of commit to coming in and staying. So, um, trying to make this as, as painless as a process for people who are going to participate in this.
A hundred percent, yeah, again, I don't, I don't disagree with the approach. I just, I just want to make sure that we're either doing something and we're documenting what we're doing in response to the MTA survey, or we're not doing something different and we're documenting.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's to Brad's point, we had a discussion with the MTA leadership and they didn't really have any, any hard and fast things that they were looking for, for us to do. So, you know, when we talked about all of these things that we've kind of just surfaced here, we're also surfaced at that table and they all kind of, I think, understood.
Good, can we document it?
Sure.
Okay. Melissa?
So my question was, you said you talked to the MTA. Have you talked to other staff members other than the electric, and, other than the executive leadership team? As part of the hiring process, like, like what this, what they really mean? So I guess who has the answers that you're seeking? Is it the MTA? It's actually the teachers taking the survey? Are they giving their department heads feedback? Are you meeting with the department heads to say, hey, what's up with the teachers? Um, and when I read the, the summaries, that's sort of what jumped out at me, like, who is getting talked to? And it's a broader que, um, when you're dealing with leadership, so you're dealing with the leadership of the MTA.
Hmm.
Um, there's no, uh, the, the common voice isn't being heard, I guess. Or, or there's, there has to be a link between that because those are the people taking the survey, um, particularly with hiring. So maybe it's not just, maybe, I don't know. Maybe the hiring is, they have some ideas and it goes beyond MTA. Just my two cents, like, that's what it seems to be saying. When nobody's talking to the teachers.
Wait for Matt to call him. Thanks. Um, I, I'm, I'll imagine that I'm, I'm, what I'm about to say, I'm, I'm not the only one who, who felt this way. When I originally read the, 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 the MTA survey a month or two ago, um, you know, it's like, I mean, I've read a thousand things like that over the course of my career and, and and you don't always believe everything you read. So just because they had pages and pages of complaints about uh, the leadership, that you're not doing this, you're not doing that, that in and of itself doesn't make it so. So it's, so what I'm wondering is, and this is, I'm, I'm glad this came up because, you know, this, um, I know there was issues in that about the hiring process and what you've said is that we, we follow the hiring process. That's basically what we've done all along. Um, so they shouldn't, if, if you're having discussions with them about it, they, they shouldn't be saying, oh, that's great. That's what we wanted, because if they, if that's what we've been doing all along, then why the hell are you complaining about it? So I think this, I mean, this is great. I, but I also think that this is perhaps the beginning of a discussion um, with not just the MTA leadership, but beyond, like, what's really the issue and what's going on? Um, because just because someone complains about something doesn't mean that complaint is valid. And it's up to us to kind of sift through what's valid and what's not. Work with people on the, the other side of the table to the extent that we can do, to kind of come to some, you know, agreement about how we're going to go forward and, and with no delusions about us always or ever coming to complete agreement. Um, I mean, they may always complain about the hiring process, no matter what we do. Um, and that shouldn't surprise us. Uh, but I, I, I think this is, this is good, but I think this is the start of a, of a dialogue with leadership and rank and file about this and the other issues mentioned in here.
I think though, that Melissa's kind of speaks to what you were trying to say in that MTA leadership didn't have, given all the feedback, they didn't have next steps, but there were so many voices who shared that. I mean, I, I worked with a lot of schools and I've seen a lot of feedback and I've got a lot of awful feedback as a leader under really difficult circumstances, and I think that happens everywhere. And there was a lot of very critical feedback that we need to take very seriously on this survey.
But I think there's, there, there needs to be a, a, um, I don't know, a, a sifting of it to, to try to get a better sense of, you know, what's, what's valid and what isn't.
I agree, yeah.
Cause I'm not assuming everything is valid.
Yeah, and I think, I think we tried to address that coming up though, remember for that.
Given the trends, just to finish my thought, when I read it, I didn't read that people wanted to make the decisions. What I heard and just reading here through the summaries is that people don't feel heard, they feel that feedback is ignored, decision seemingly predetermined. They don't feel that their input is being used genuinely within here, you know, in, in one way. So sometimes leadership's going to make a decision that isn't what teachers have all done that, that happens in every role and every job. But I think the people as professionals get that. My question is really around the communication of, kind of to Matt's point again, this is what we have done and it's not working in this way, at least. What are we going to do differently, whether it's around communication, how people are sharing their input? Like, to do the same thing and not have a way to address the input and people being heard? I, I.
I push back on you. So if we have a two person, two finalists for a position, half of the people are going to feel unhurt. Cause, cause I get, I solicit feedback, you know, he's a director of teaching and learning position from two years ago. Had, you know, two finalists and everybody had opportunities to meet with the finalists. And, you know, we use a, a form that everybody gets to submit their, their feedback on that, and I read everywhere. And what I can tell you then is then I got one pile that's pro this one and the other pile that's pro this.
No way.
So, you know.
Everyone happy, but I think getting what you want and feeling heard are two different things. So my question is, how is it shared with them? Like, when you make that decision, how is it shared, like, here's who it is, here's what, essentially?
Yeah, we do.
Is it like emailed, you like?
Usually an email to announce, sort of has, you know, what I just kind of read was what Kevin wrote to the faculty around the C department head positions.
And I, and I read the, I read the climate survey less about our practices and more about communication around what the hell's happening. Um, and, and again, I, I will stand eye, like, I, I took from that survey that people just want to be heard. And if it was communicated, this is our hiring, like, this is how we're hiring. We're, thank you, but who is doing the communicating? So is it the E L T, is it going through the department heads, going through the teachers, who, who's doing it?
Just going to say, I think when, when we spoke again with, um, the MTA, there were, and like, we had a, a really open, I think, honest conversation for, I don't know how long it was, but, um, there were some, some themes, I think, but there were also some things with the survey that and, and I think they agreed, like, some of it was, was vague. So you're, we're stuck kind of like this right now, asking what, what does that mean? You know, so I don't know if they're going to do it, or if there's an opportunity. And I think what, what you're, the guys talked about is like the communication, talked with them a lot about sort of the themes of communication and access. And I think some of the things that we were going to put in place are going to provide those going forward so that there is more of an opportunity for, you know, teachers, rank and file, whatever term was just used, you know, to, to access Mike, or to access E L T and ask questions and, and feel more part of, um, you know, the equation, if, if they're feeling like they're not part of the equation right now. Um, but there were some parts of the, and they, I think, you know, they, they agreed, some parts of the survey left you wondering what, what are we talking about?
So they said this is the first step they've done. So they just kind of threw something out and they know that next year, next time they do it, they have to be more specific and tweet some questions to get better.
So I think the rest of this response starts to address some of these concerns that I'm hearing. And I think the question we're all trying to get answered is how do we know that these, these measures that are being put in place are working? And I think we can talk about that at the end.
Yeah, I think even step one is.
Let's hear what the intervention and then let's talk about what it's going to look like, what are we?
Yeah, or I don't even know what we're going to go change is addressing the root issue.
Right. Cause I do think on its face, that climate survey said, we don't feel like we're heard, full stop, in all these areas. And there's, there's some documented parts of this response that will maybe start making progress on that. But how do we know it's working? When's the next update? You know, how do you guys feel about it in three months, six months? How do they feel about it in three months, six months? Is there a bigger problem that's root cause? I don't know, but I feel like that's the question we're all trying to get to, but we haven't heard all the interventions yet.
So maybe just to move on from this particular topic and continue through, I think the synthesis of this has been that there's a big red mark in the survey. We're not doing anything different yet. Are we really, really confident that this red mark's not going to be in the next survey on the same topic? And Warren's digging it.
You're talking specifically about hiring?
Uh, yes, being heard around hiring.
I, as I said, this is a process that we, that I've used for years throughout my career. Um, and I, and as I've learned here, it's not very different than what's been done historically here. I don't know what a different process would look like.
Hearing what was.
Cause the survey doesn't, by knowledge, delineate what hiring, like, are they talking about hiring teachers? But that's a department head, like, that doesn't include, you know, right?
We can't even articulate why we're red right now. Right? So my point is just, we, Warren's going to dig in more, so we at least understand why we're red.
Okay.
Then we can make a decision of, do we do something or do we not do something and here's why?
Okay.
Right, but if we can't articulate why we're even red.
Right.
Because we don't understand the root cause, that feels like step one to me.
Hmm.
So there are a few hands up, Jeff had it up.
I had something to say, but it's just the hiring issue is, that's a hard one, no matter what. Totally agree. I think understanding it more goes a long way, try to just, you know, put a band-aid on to understand it. But, you know, for me, you know, I'm just taking a step back, more holistic, you know, to me, the concerns are, you know, there's obviously a lot of pent-up frustration, you know, this took, there wasn't a survey until now. So we've hit a point now where, you know, people are at a breaking point, where they decide to get this together, put a survey together and relay their concerns. Um, and to those point, there's always a little bit of piling on, but I think to get something like this through at a school, it, it's a lot. So I, I think, you know, I think we're all hearing that from the back channels too, that there's this underlying frustration. And I don't think it's hiring, I think it's broader, you know, it goes to sort of leadership, visibility, you know, communication, very big topics. And I think just digging on more or two will up the margins, but that's not really the root cause and the true reason. So, you know, I'm happy we're addressing this. Uh, I think this is a bigger initiative than just, you know, a little thing that we, you know, wiping under the, swiping under the table. So I'm hoping we get recurring updates on this as we go. You know, even if the survey isn't ideal, maybe you roll it out again from the administration in a year to see if things have moved.
I don't buy it, the administration.
Not our survey.
Well, whoever's did it, you know, ask them to redo it so you get two data points. But I think just showing that you're, you heard them and, you know, you're willing to dig in this and figure out what, you know, what's real and what, you know, what you can fix and what you can't. And, you know, but, you know, just to reiterate, I think this is, to me, this is a real big warning sign. This came out really, you know, not a lot of positivity at all across the board. So, uh, to me, that's a real warning signal that there's some kind of. So, uh, to me, that's a real warning signal that there's some kind of root cause structural issue that we have to address as a school committee, administrations at school in general. And I think we all support whatever it's going to be. So.
Yeah, just real briefly, I think that, um, you may in fact follow essentially the same process. But you can still communicate. And I think that if, if there is one thing that, that I read in this, this survey um, as well as other, other sources, um, that communication, you know, definitely has room for improvement, put it that way. And it probably always does in almost every situation, but but certainly, um, here at Masco and with this administration, um, with its various constituents, um, that has been a recurring theme of stuff that, that I've heard over the years before this, this survey. And I think that it's, um, the process you follow, you know, for hiring or whatever other thing, you know, may be exactly the same. But you can still, you know, the, the nature and tender of your, of your communication can be tweaked. Which, you know, might actually alleviate some of the, some of the issues. So just, you know, I think we just need to think about that.
Sorry, I gave him a death stare a minute ago. Well, I was gonna, initially I was gonna push back against the needing to have all of the teachers involved in hiring, because that's not a thing. Nowhere is that ever a thing. It's like, I work for a law firm. They did, they don't come to me and go, oh, do you like this lawyer? We're not, they don't have a whole office hiring process. So I was gonna push back, but if we're trying to kind of get a sense, that's fine, but I just don't think that every person needs to be vetted throughout the school before they get hired. But just see, and to ask for that just seems really burdensome.
Oh, but I think, you know, we're just kind of talking about the middle school social studies position. How many teachers? Three, four?
Yeah, uh, three teachers.
Teachers out of, out of five in the whole school in social studies were on the committee. So, I mean, it's pretty, pretty representative of, of that building, social studies department. Well, they're hiring the sixth, so they had five and.
We didn't have a department head.
We have an department head on board, so.
So my other question was, uh, because there, again, I read it and it's like, there just seemed to be a complete distrust of what was the turnover? Teachers, like how many teachers did we lose? How many teachers did we need to hire?
From the outside position, outside of the district, we fired 1.7. This year.
So 1.7 left.
Position, the social studies position with the internal candidate. Which other one did you?
Math.
Math. That was another internal candidate. You know, as I said, it was the, the math position. And then, uh, the drama position were both external candidates. And that's, that's the sum total of new staff.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I missed the council. Was the total?
There was, the sum total is 1.7 FTEs from the outside.
The inside?
Inside, two, two teaching positions.
And how many?
An assistant principal position that we also fill with an internal candidate. Um, from a member of the middle school faculty, uh, Andrew Volpohl is now the middle school assistant principal.
And then the department heads that you hired.
The department heads from the outside. We didn't have internal candidates.
The third who also, uh, were not rehiring.
Oh, yeah, the world language.
So I think we're all hitting on, you know, we, the hiring process is part of it, but there's other sentiments of it like, they would like to improve lines of communication, accessibility, visibility. And I appreciate the listening sessions, but thinking about, I'm just gonna throw this crazy idea out there, but thinking about campus design, accessibility, trying to come up with a really proactive, visible solution to the climate survey. Have you ever thought about moving your office into this building?
Every day. I just don't know where.
I think it's a, it's a move in the right direction that there's gotta be a way to think about another position or another resource or, you know, we keep hearing how, you know, we have declining enrollment. Um, there's gotta be space where this seems like we're in a crisis. We're trying to come up with really proactive reasons. Let's be creative about creating more accessibility, showing them your care, your present. There's a lot of conversations that happen in the hallway, in the lunchroom, in the cafeteria, in ways that it's very hard if your office is across campus. Even as hard as you try, if your computer and your phone and your meeting space is a couple hundred yards away, it, it makes it harder.
Should relocate you to right where you're sitting.
Yeah, right here. That's the issue. Yeah. I mean, I
Completely agree. I completely agree. That's, I think.
This is not a, not really a space. We've thought about it quite a bit. Fortunately.
Add a cart in the hallway.
Obviously, actually last, last fall, I started actually bringing my laptop and going sitting in the hallway. There's some very nice cafe tables on the second and third floor here. And I found a folding table in the middle school that I would set up in the main hallway outside of the auditorium and work there during the day.
EV cart.
I mean, yeah, we had an EV cart and it was pretty broken. But, yeah, I mean, I've done that.
Was it?
A lot of people. No. I could see, talk to maybe two people during the course of the day.
And one of the challenges, if there's a lack of trust, it takes a long time to have people get used to the new processes. It is a lot sitting around and waiting. But, yeah, and I don't know how you force that. My soft skills aren't great, so I'm not too good for, for advice on this spot.
Yeah, I'm not doubting your effort. I'm just trying to throw something out there.
To bring, yeah, to bring this.
Seeing at a table on the second floor, but like finding a way to get to know people, integrate with them. It, it just feels like that's what I was reading could be a move in the right direction. Listening sessions, there are more forced, those are, it's great also. I think it's a yes and.
Are we gonna keep going through the, just, I think those will get us some, as I don't want to talk. I don't necessarily have anything about the hiring process, but some other points in there, comments on.
All right. The third one was inconsistent student discipline and behavioral accountability. And as you can see there, we're tightening up the cell phone tardies and searches, social probation, uh, language in our student handbooks. Uh, high schools putting together an attendance committee. We've got some more pieces around the middle school stuff that actually come down, um, in some later numbers under this.
On that one, do you think that's just a, it consists of training or just their ability and how we enforce?
I'll defer to the principals.
Is that just a, you know, maybe a staff training issue or just, you know, people are feeling it's inconsistent, how things are metered out?
With it, um, so rolling back out this year, accident, just made signs, no cell phones in the classroom. It's literally going on the door every single classroom. I just printed out a hundred of them and they're going to go up. Um, it's also going out in the parent newsletter, reminder of the cell phone policy. It's in the handbook, but the presentation that I gave all of you guys of, of the changes, there's a highlight page that says, please read these handbook changes uh, under the handbook. So if you don't want to read the whole handbook, clip notes. Uh, so it's just making sure everyone follows it. We've some followed it great last year and then others did. Just also with cell phones, tardies, um, social probation. So the APs are also working, um, we've found in Power School, there's new reports that we can run. They've been going over every single student. Um, so now it'll generate someone so's been this many tardies, so and so's spending, so it's sending them instead of them looking for it. Uh, just so they can stay on top of the habitual. And again, it's being sent out to the parents again, down to the school.
This is a really tough area because there, you know, these are all, every impression is a personal reason. There's reasons why. But the impression, you know, squashing bad impressions is, is a challenge. So.
On attendance issues and it is nationwide and it's got. So everyone's struggling with it because we got so lax on forcing students really working. Uh, and so parents were not happy keeping their kids home. Um, but to your point, there's many other reasons. Um, and so we might not be, from the teacher's perspective, like, hey, you have been, you know, been all over this kid. And then NASA were also holding house meetings, like, I can't put this in email, but I can tell you why it's not happening.
I think the impression is the reality. Really, this is a really challenging area.
You know, we have to, we have to pay attention to everyone's confidential information as well. Uh, but yeah, so just tightening up things, we hashed the policies are setting up parents, going over staff again. And a lot of signage.
In the middle school, uh, the cell phone piece is completely different because we don't allow cell phones at all. But as far as the discipline piece goes, I think it partially goes back to communication too. There is a privacy piece of it, but if teachers don't feel like, hey, this kid came down to the office and I don't know what happened. As a follow-up, um, that we can do a better job of communicating what, what's happening with particular students or discipline issues or things, just so that teachers are in the know of what's going on without, you know, um, sharing too much personal information or.
I really appreciate the push for chronic absenteeism. Cause I noted up our DSS report card. That's the worst. So thank you for doing that work. It is an incredible challenge. Um, just question as a policy member, I knew about cell phones. Is there like a, I guess like a flow chart for consequences? Like if this happens one time, two times, three times? So do teachers implement that in their classroom or is there a standard?
Yep. So it's, it's in their classroom, it's classroom management, and then basically one, two, three, four, then the APs get them off. And it's like, yeah, we first ask teachers to work with the student, from the student parents, go to the AP. So there is a flow chart. That is not necessarily given to parents, but the staff will ask the flow chart and then what do you believe is, is.
So there's like a standard after four goes to the AP. Here's what the AP does more. Yeah, great. All the time, right?
So was this looking to address the issues around safety and an orderly environment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, from.
Survey?
Yes.
So I met with a few new students, it came out and for the high school clarification. Not necessarily about safety, just really clarifying what our rules are and that everyone's holding to it. Um, some people felt they were a little bit vague. So really this, you know, first stage is really going, these are the rules. Here it is in writing. Please follow them. This is what we do for communication, but also knowing exactly the flow chart like you were saying. Um, so when I went, met with people, unless it didn't come up as a safety, it came up as clarification.
Cause I'm just looking through your, the response from the leadership team, and I'm really not seeing much that addresses the safety concerns. And for me, that's a huge concern. I don't know if that's something we have to do with our, during budget season, if there's certain investments we have to make. But that big red bar is like blinking at me. And I'm not seeing much in here that addresses that. That was the only one that I'm like, oh, maybe that's trying to get to it, but um, do you feel?
Didn't, didn't have, I don't have front end. Define like safety, like what?
That means. Safe and order. Well, see, and this is the other part. As administrator of the district, if I'm like 97% of my staff does not feel a safe and orderly environment exists in my school. I think that's incumbent upon you to figure out why this, getting here today and expressing that, oh, well, we don't know what they're talking about. Like I, and I know there's different employment laws that might put up some hurdles in that arena, but that's a huge number. And so I, I was hoping we might have answers today. Um, it doesn't seem like that's the case, but that's what, where my frustration is coming from.
You understand what the MTA is asking?
I mean, I think that's why we have the listening sessions piece in here at different times.
Really what we're, what we're trying to get at is to hear from people, what this, yeah, what this actually means, because.
Sorry, I can't hear both of you.
I think, I think we're saying the same thing. That's why, you know, we're looking at trying to put together listening sessions, looking at faculty councils at the school. Um, meeting regularly with union leadership, continuing those things because, uh, you know, I, you know, I, we don't understand where that's coming, quite honestly.
When you met with the MTA, did they not offer any insights?
Zero.
Did we ask them for insights on them?
We did.
That was an odd little time.
Put them individually and then we met as a group.
So we've asked the MTA, we have a red bar that's 97% on safety. Help me understand what this is. And they said, we don't know.
Right.
No, that's okay. So that was sort of where I was trying to get with my question, like who did you talk to? And if you didn't get an answer from the MTA, this survey came out on June 3rd, there was still three weeks left in school to find an answer, or two weeks left in school to sort of find an answer. I, the fact that you say the MTA didn't answer that question, that they want to improve the school as much as we all do. So that, that's like a BS answer. I, I'm sorry. That's what my brain goes to. That's like a bunch of BS. That's a red flag. Um, I'm sorry, like I, I want to hear from all the stakeholders at the school. Like I want to hear from the teach, I want teacher representatives. I want MTA representatives. I want department head representatives. I want people from the ELT. I want it, if, I want, uh, support staff, like we need to know if you have a plan that when we implement this, it's going to make things better. We have no idea that these steps are going to make things better. So to me, this is a, this was a very frustrating document and a very frustrating process. That we, and, and I understand employment laws and I, that we can't talk about things. But there were themes here that could have been addressed before July 30th. So that's really my frustration. And I'm sorry that I, I spoke over anyone, but this whole conversation is blowing my mind.
Didn't have a response? Is there a, a pending response? Do you guys like send them back to the people they represent and say, okay, get some answers. We'll talk again.
That'd be some nice homework. Just ask them to go, keep going, keep playing with the, with the foundation of these questions.
There was not any, any real offer on their part to come up with anything else other than to look at this and say, okay, sounds good.
But if you guys are the leadership team driving culture and you show an interest in understanding the problem. I would pass needs and in good conscience, they would go do the work, figure out exactly what they want to.
We say, let's work together to change the climate for the benefit of all of our students.
That's what we said.
It's a little bit of this, help me help you like question five, whatever it is. What does that mean? If they don't have an answer, say, can you help me understand where, what's driving this and send them off and say, come back, you know? I think, I think you're right. I think, you know, these, it's, it's very hard to write surveys in general. So you know, understanding what's actually the underlying frustration between each one takes a lot of work. Uh, it'd be nice to get, you know, MTA consultant to go out there and just kind of dig around and really find out what, what's driving each question.
Just seeing your request, I think it needs to come from the chair. You know, and say, and the chair reach out to them and say, we understand you've refused to provide any clarity on this.
I think they were necessarily out, out and out refused. They just didn't have any answers. I, I don't think they actually know, quite honestly.
What, what's the request made for them to to, to, you know, move back forward?
Could I, no, we didn't specifically ask them to go back and ask. But the, you know, that was the sort of where is this coming from? What do you guys think we should do? Those were the, that was the, the conversation and I, you know, I wasn't with the, the principals when they met with the MTA leadership and.
Met with them individually when it came out and that the summer created this document. It said, looks good. You guys are on the right, going in the right direction. So it was like, you know, we met individually and it was like, can you go through some questions? What are we looking at? And they believed for me, and you know, each school's a little bit different. It was like cell phones, the attendance and the discipline. And they believed for me, and you know, each school's a little bit different. It was like cell phones, the attendance and the discipline. We're like the high school big ones. So that's what we're working on.
Just a real quick thing before we leave this. Trevor, what, was there a specific questions? That you were, uh, referencing when you gave, was it question nine on the survey? Okay, cause I, I did pull that up when you said that there was a huge number who didn't feel safe. Which, I mean, it's, it's curious. That first of all, I don't know how many of you have it, you know, handy. I had to dig around for it, but. The, the, uh, first of all, a total of, there were eighty-eight responses. Which is not, you know, it, I'm not sure that's enough of a, of a, uh, sample. To sense, to get a, the sense of what's.
That's a really good survey response.
But it was, there was a big issue in the middle school and less of an issue in the high school. So.
I did specifically ref- I said school when I. Was ma- I didn't make it sound like it was the whole, um, district.
Alright, that's it. And it's curious, actually, now they look at the next, the very next question, when it asks about the assistant principal and. Both in the middle and the high school, and the answers are very different. So they're much more positive. So.
The question actually says a safe and orderly environment. So maybe it's not necessary, maybe what we're talking about, maybe it's not a safety issue so much as. They couldn't, you know, a lot of it was the communication part.
Yeah, potentially.
But I think the point that we're trying to make is.
I understand. It's a very vague question.
Yes.
That's a problem.
Let's go figure out what's behind it. Let's go figure out what's behind the data and.
So I, I, my point being, I don't know that it maybe it wasn't necessarily the safety issue itself. It would maybe it leaned more towards the orderly part. Cause a lot of it seemed to be communication and discussion.
Sure. We're asking them not to speculate on what it is, go get data and own the response. Right. If you're not getting data from the MTA, then go to the next level and go to whoever you need to do. Figure out what's driving ninety-seven percent of that red bar. Right. Let's keep going.
So number four on, uh, trust communication and staff morale, we're gonna, uh, launch monthly superintendent listening sessions, one in each building per month. Uh, and that'll include the prin- uh, building principals and other members of the executive leadership team. Uh, principals are going to establish faculty councils at its school to meet monthly. Uh, we're going to continue to meet regularly with the union leadership to address concerns or questions that come up. Uh, and the, uh, high school is going to schedule, uh, reinstitute the practice of house meetings. Uh, on the fourth Monday of each month, they used to actually get together as a, as a, as a, look, each floor in the high school is a different house. Um, so.
A lot of the staff is multi-grade, so they can pick, you know, which one they want to go to. Concerns are with their students and they can talk to, um, their actual assistant principal of like what is going on with the ninth grade, what's going on with the tenth grade. Um, based on the calendar, it is not every month. This was not, it was four Mondays. Uh, but they used to happen regularly pre-COVID and then they kind of petered out and that was clear. And surveys as well as talking to people that they want, you know, the house meeting to back on those extra days. Um, to talk specifically to these principals of the concerns of the students. And that's where you can kind of dial a little bit more into specific students. It's not written in. You can kind of get a little bit more information.
Then number five is invest in, uh, supports for staff wellness. Um, so access to social emotional learning and mental health resources and time for collaboration. Um, let the principals kind of chime in on the, the next couple of bullets about recognitions. Uh, peer nominations, shared planning opportunities. And to invest in wellness supports, um, this is actually going to be built into our professional learning, uh, professional development model. Um, we actually looked at the calendar for PD for yesterday and these pieces, there are times that are built in for, uh, shared planning. Uh, and for, um, time for collaboration, uh, and for actually individual choice around, uh, professional growth.
Is any of this contractual in number five?
Um, what do you mean contractual?
PV is, right? I mean, this in general and recognitions and. Access to health resources, access to health resources, sounds like something that would be documented in the contract, but.
Nah, it's not.
Also they are.
Access to mental health resources? I mean, no, they're not. I mean, but we're talking about, you know, mental health, first aid training.
Professional learning I can speak to, uh. I don't know if that was necessarily, just to be clear, professional learning wasn't identified as issue. Uh, but I guess I saw, we saw this as an opportunity. And, um, I have a committee, Katie's on it, um, that is pretty inclusive. Or joint with the association that we make decisions around professional learning. So we say contractual. Like, you know, I think a great example is we developed a survey, multiple surveys last school year, probably feeling like we were serving together. But when you develop a survey together, you have more ownership over the questions. You have a full understanding of the results. Um, and we've just, we continue to work together. That's, that's been a dynamite group. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm hopeful, like, cause going into this next school year, we've got a number of offerings with regards to self-care. Um, we're bringing mental health first aid into the schools thanks to the Triton Coalition. Uh, you know, it's something we've offered in the community, but it's, it's a, it's tough, you know, it's tough for educators to take a couple of days out of their classrooms. Ten, two full days of training. So we're building it into our professional learning model. We've got a number of our teachers that are leading self-care workshops. There's basically bottom line is anything we do professional learning wise, it's an inclusive process. It's a lot of representation from the faculty. Um, so I, I think it's a good way to address some of these issues around. Self-care, um, whatever you want to call it, productivity, morale, right? I think there's an opportunity to improve the culture, um, through professional learning. That makes sense.
So more surveys were, surveys were mentioned again. Who actually talks to who at Masco?
What?
Who talks to who? Like, is there ever a time where, Mike, you talked to the teachers?
Mine?
Directly.
I pull them together as faculty, uh.
Because, so.
Professional learning.
So a lot of this. Doesn't require more surveys. It requires face time, personal connection. And I know that in my professional life, if I need to get something done, the way I do it is go up to someone's office. And I actually get it done. I make a connection. I joke a little. I win if I make somebody laugh, you know?
We do a lot of that. They, a lot of the stuff. In the classroom, watching the curriculum, but like in their prep, walking in. To your point.
Okay.
You got a lot more done face to face.
Right. And so when I read the, Mike, I read some of this and I'm saying this publicly, but. I think that people, why are you doing it? I think that there's a relation, and I think that came out five years ago. And I don't, I don't like saying this and I don't like confronting, but when I read the survey, I think they really want. It's a small, it's not a huge school. We're one school, one building, two schools. Fifteen hundred students where I don't. I think there's, there needs to be more hands-on time, Mike. And that's what I'm reading in the survey. And not through the executive leadership team, like. I want my lead, I want to have access to my leader. And I think that's what makes a really good organization is that I can, I can walk down the hall and. I could stop in your office and say hello. I know your office not here, but I, I'm just being frank, like. That's what I read in here, like, these are all great, like. I think the, well, I actually, the one thing I really love was an investment in, in, in wellness supports. Because I think teachers need that now more than any other time. But there seems to be a real disconnect between the top and, and the body. And I just want to say that publicly because I think that's really important and I think that's the one thing that might change the climate around here.
If I could just ask, just throw something in here. I, when I read the survey results, I. I didn't get the sense, quite honestly, that, that. Mike's lack of accessibility was the central problem. Um, I got the sense that this was a executive leadership team issue. I concluded, but, but others as well. Um, now to whatever, um. Freedance you wanna, you wanna put on, on that, that, that's fine, but I think that's the issue that it was. Not one person, but, but the leadership team as a group, um, was not as. Accessible, engaged, connected with the school community as, as they want.
If that's the case, the, the executive leadership seems to be more engaged with the faculty and staff than ever. And they're still producing this climate survey. And we heard, I, I heard these themes in twenty twenty-two, you know?
So, but why are they saying it if, if it's, okay, I'm confused now. They, they said it was an issue, but they didn't.
Administration. Really? Um, I, I, and I apologize, I cannot access it, so I am having to read from my phone. Um, I hadn't made notes, but. If you're having the same trouble I did, I had to go incognito and it would open. Okay, thank you. No. It was in the second part, apologize. I think it was in the second, the last part of communication. So when I read district leadership, I don't. I don't hear executive leadership team. I hear district leadership. And so to me, that's the head of the, the school. Because if I was, if it was a business organization in the private sector, it would be my president or my CEO. Um, so I, that's how I read it. I can't find it now because. And I would push back, like, if president and CEO, the rank and file don't necessarily have. Direct, always have their contact with your CEO. Again, you're walking around, you're helping out and, and all that, but.
I guess the way I look at it, that was, I, I came here from a district of five schools. And I would be in each building twice a month. That was it. I'm here multiple days a week. All the time in this, in this building or in the middle school. I, I don't know. And, and I'll also say I'm trying to be very careful not to be the principal of the Mascanomic Regional Middle School and High School. Cause that's not my role. And so if somebody wants to meet with me, I am there in minutes. I am accessible in the hallways or in the buildings and, you know, talk to people all the time. But I am not going to usurp the responsibilities and the authority of your two building principals. I am really careful about that.
Anybody wants that.
And that's, you know, that's, that, but that's the line I am walking all the time. So, you know, and we can, you know, I'm happy to talk to you offline about this. I, you know, Matt made that offer and one of you took me up on it. So, you know, please, still, even willing to do that with people and sit down and talk about it. But, you know, it's really difficult when you're in a one building school district. I think, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuances here that don't exist other places. And as I said, you know, I try to be really careful not to be in there. Breathing down two principals' necks every day, saying, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Why are you doing, you know? Because it's really easy to do that here. You know, really be so involved in things that, you know, would normally not touch my desk in another district. So. You know, um, pretty much the, the, the tightrope here.
I just want to throw my voice behind Melissa's comments and amplify them because. I agree. She said it really well. Um, I think in any circumstance, as leaders, you have to walk the top. And you set the tone for culture and regardless of whether or not you have contact with your president or your CEO. You know what their mission is, you know what they believe in, you know what they're driving, you know what they're focused on. They inform the goals and the culture of the broader organization. And so if there are, there are systemic issues at the layers below that, that are not being addressed. And people don't feel like they have appropriate access or recourse or communication around all of that. That's a problem for the very top. And being in the hallways and talking to people is a start, but they have to feel like something's going to happen if they come to you. And they have a vulnerable conversation. I don't think anybody wants you to usurp the responsibilities of people on your team. But I do think they want a, a certain level of communication and accountability. And it has to come from you because you are that person. So if that hasn't been communicated to you, there's a breakdown somewhere. And it's beholden on you to fix that, to be proactive, to take the steps, not sit and wait. Not let people approach you, but to go seek the answers and drive that from the top down. Because clearly they're starting to drive it from the bottom up. And in my experience, that does not send well, so. Maybe hit the gas a little bit more would be my frank commentary on it.
Even if we say, okay, the survey didn't necessarily reference, say. The administrator's office. If there's weak links in there that you can identify. It's still a reflection on you because we have no say over that. And that falls under your umbrella, not us. So I'll leave it at that. I don't want to get into any of that, but it's my two cents.
Let's keep rolling.
Alright, um, number six is the student culture and citizen workshops at the middle school. Um, so Phil's going to establish a faculty committee, uh, building off the citizen workshops and expand and revise the program. Phil, you want to?
Yeah, so, um, this could include new videos, discussion topics, teacher guides, guest speakers and other similar experiences for students. Incorporate feedback from the teens and also gather student input. Uh, I think the thing is here to realize those, this would be a faculty committee, so it would be faculty driven, so we know what teachers want. Uh, this program to look at, look like that could be, um, an advisory program for tool school. That would be taking place during, uh, PM blocks. Uh, it could also include, um. You know, additional pieces beyond just an M block advisory program. So. Uh, but I really want that to come from the teachers, uh, with my vision, meaning it. Um, and my, my, what I envision for that is, um. I'd like to see a program, uh, that I present to the group of feedback or vision and then eventually implementation along with Andrew Bopler, who's. So, and I think an advisory program would be, uh, what I would like to see us be able to incorporate. Uh, citizen workshops are good, uh, but they were, you know, done once monthly. An advisory program would be something that's at least once a week, if not twice. Uh, and we have a re-strut, I don't want to say strict, but a very structured program that would go along with that. Easily implement, that wouldn't be, you know, new instruction or preparation.
Would you be working with them to revise the student feedback survey as well?
The, the student feedback survey?
Yeah, you survey the students to see how they feel about the citizen workshops. Would that be revised as part of this that you get?
I, I think that this would come, that would come from the committee that we put together and a survey that's. I wouldn't say it's a survey on citizen workshops. I would say it's a general survey for students about what kind of program and they would like to see as part of it.
I think last year you presented results from students. Yeah, okay. That's the survey I'm talking about. students. Yeah, okay, that's the survey I'm talking about, it's.
Yeah, I, but I think it's, we could, we could definitely incorporate that, but I wanna go beyond citizen workshops, um, as well.
Thank you.
Um, I think this is a fabulous response to just that data advisory programs have so much data, there are myriad of curricula out there, and I just feel like this is a um, great tactic with a lot of opportunities. What advisory curriculum are you planning on using?
That's why we're gonna put the committee together to work on that.
Okay, so T B.
Selecting anything yet.
Let's T B D on that.
And then the last one is revising, uh, faculty meetings at the middle school and the high school. Um, the principals are gonna be looking at soliciting topic suggestions from the faculty. Um, you know, as we figure that fifty percent of the meetings are operational information, so what would we like to do for the other fifty percent? Um, and as part of our early year meetings, solicit feedback regarding MCAT scheduling and make adjustments, uh, as possible, some middle school specific.
Yeah, I mean, MCAT, the middle school is a huge lift for us. We have, um, four tests for the eighth graders, two tests for the seventh graders, it takes up a huge amount of time in spring. Um, and it and it does majorly affect the schedule. You know, last year, I made a mistake in that I scheduled all the MCATs in the summer, and then um, came up with a calendar, and I thought I was doing a great job ahead of time, and then the state went and changed the whole testing window on us. Um, and I had to go back and revise, that was after, it was already out of effect, so. I'm not doing that this year, uh, so I will be waiting to come up with a schedule, but that gives me time to get feedback from the faculty as far as, oh, what kind of schedule adjustments would you like to see? And how can we incorporate that ahead of time, because, you know, we don't want kids missing the same classes every time they're testing. Um, and we need to come up with a balance, but also realize that, uh, whatever we do to the schedule, it affects both grades, not just one grade. You don't test on the same day for seventh and days, you have to balance all the needs of the students in the building, not just
Based on faculty meetings.
Once a month. They're only twenty-five minutes long. That's that's by contract.
And I don't know if we discussed this, um, is it possible to have not the M B T, not M T A here, but actual teachers here to tell us how these changes? If they're helpful, if they're impactful, what needs to be changed? Like, I appreciate you guys. But they're the ones that drove the survey, so it'd be nice to hear directly from them as to.
I mean, I think it's within the purview of the chair or the will of the committee. I know they did offer many times over the budget process that they.
No, 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 absolutely. I know we talked about that, and they, and I, and, you know, when I was standing out there with them too, it was like, you guys should come back, not just budget season, but, you know, tell us what you're doing and how it's going and what changes, you know, we need to know this kind of stuff, not after the fact when we need to cut you. Like, it'd be nice to hear these conversations, and I I don't know, I don't know if they'll actually take us up on it, but it'd be nice.
I think department heads would provide an opportunity for that as well, because they have a good pulse of their departments, and, uh, it might be a little more manageable for you as a group. Because the faculty is so big here. I'm not saying don't try, um, but I think we could definitely do more work with bringing department heads, and they used to come in more often, I think. For whatever reason, it doesn't happen as often, but outside of budgets, I'm sure they would love us to talk about what their departments are doing and kind of promote their, their department's work for you guys.
Yeah, we talked about that the end of the year, um, if they were, to be able to showcase what each other staff members are doing, the new initiatives, um, some of the questions you guys have for us, we're able to answer deep dive. They'd be happy to come and give you the rundown of each, each department. Again, not in budget season.
Right, I'm gonna wrap this topic up by just saying, you know, the time we spent on this tonight and the difficult candor that we offered, the E L T is a demonstration of how seriously the school committee is taking the results of this survey. Um, this is a great school, it's demonstrated by our students, the success of our students, but there is a culture problem here at Masco, and it needs to be fixed. And it's the E L T's responsibility to understand the data and fix it. Let's go on to the next topic.
Did we have a date for the retreat? I'm sorry.
It's the August.
August.
Retreat is in the, is the August meeting.
It's the last Wednesday in August.
Um, how I envisioned this was.
August, Wednesday, seventh.
You have Chris a second to come back?
I haven't picked an occasion for this. We've been to location. Did ask Jackie to book the the center at Ten Elm. Because I think that worked well last year, so.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What did you ask?
Center at Ten Elm, where we were at last year.
Old Trafford.
Boxer. Place, place. But they're utilized.
Great place to do it.
As people have looked at Screaming Boxer, Hamilton's car.
That's your, the chairman.
We did it in Milton that first year.
Yeah, we did the library.
Got Panera, these cookies off cycle somehow.
All right, um.
Wherever you wanna be, you know?
Boxer sounds great.
I should room late.
So, um, all right, folks, let's talk about agenda topics. Do you have, do people have topics in mind that they want to ante up?
Get.
Budget.
Budget process, specifically.
Just to, are we just doing a single offsite this year? I know we tried to do two. We were gonna try to do two as the discussion.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do two, but I think we also pushed some of the budget stuff to the D C I.
Yes.
Right, so that may, I I think we, in my opinion, we allow the D C I to go do their thing. I know Joe's been talking with, with Mike, uh, with Mike and Jeff. And I I think for now, we'll plan on this one traditional retreat, and then we'll let the D C I do their thing on the budget side. So budget process.
I think that the survey that we spent so much time talking about tonight, it certainly, we could, we could further that discussion.
Do you think that's too soon, or?
Yes, well, I don't think it's too soon at all. I don't think we, I think we scratched the surface.
By the way, I'm gonna write everything down.
Yeah, sure.
You can, we're not gonna have.
Consider.
Put everything down. Yeah, Adrian.
Um, as part of the budget process, what I had written down was more operational transparency. I think ultimately, the responsibility of responding to that survey lies with the E L T. And, you know, technically, we don't have operational oversight in that way, we can't really affect change there, but we can influence, we can ride direction and make sure they're paying attention to it. Um, but I do think that maybe talking about how we can have regular updates from department heads, educators, support staff, leading up to budget season, and giving us more of that operational transparency of these, the student needs, we'd love investments in these areas, things that will help us in budget season, understand supply and demand, where are their gaps? What can we do as school committee to make sure that we're making investments for the district? That is.
You're right, see, thing you said. Is the school committee can, I couldn't.
Make smart investments.
Make smart investments for the district, yeah.
Trevor.
Um, one question I've had, and we've kind of gone back and forth over the years as a committee on whether or not, like, sometimes we've had subcommittees bring goals to that meeting to then talk about and establish, and sometimes we've had goals established at the retreat that then are assigned to subcommittees. Have we figured out which way or? Like, are you expecting?
I can offer you my opinion, or we can deliberate on it. I mean, I think that the subcommittees have remained, I mean, we just went and did, um, yeah, the charter for, what's the name, for Vogel, Vogel, thank you. I I don't think the charters, but the other subcommittees are changing. I think that they're pretty well established. I I would love to see that each subcommittee come in with a set of goals for themselves for the year.
Prior to.
Prior to, or.
That could be something we address in one of our standard meetings, as a recent update, in early, early year. So the first update, first update is what their goals are. That's to save time, I I that offsite, such a value, I wanna make sure we're using it for, for things that really are kind of meeting.
Sure.
I'm just, it's all for discussion, so.
If we do, if we do have time, I wanna be able to capture it, right, so I think what you're suggesting, Trevor, is goal setting. At the.
Yeah, we have to do that.
That?
We have to do that, that's the main point.
Oh.
So just either subcommittees meeting before and having a kind of already list going, can always be added to, but.
So to be efficient, maybe we have every subcommittee meet before and establish their goals, and then bring them in and brief them and deliberate on them if necessary.
Oh, good.
Just, sorry, just came up, just to fall on your topic. I I love to get sort of a yearly agenda, not in the weeds, but just like listed topics we wanna kind of cover. I know we covered some really interesting things last year that we didn't cover this year, and almost like a wish list of things we want to kind of feather into the yearly agenda. I think last year we did that security update, which was really, I thought that was valuable. I may get into the facilities and stuff.
Maybe on goals for a pointed process, if we agree to a date to have draft goals from each committee submitted, and they could be consolidated into a single document that we all agree to review in advance, and so instead of reading the slide or reading the goal out loud to everybody and explaining what you mean by it, everyone just comes with questions, and that might enable more time in the evening for other meatier conversations.
But the goals disseminated ahead of time and questions prepared by the committee, if any. One week. One week in advance. If possible.
Awesome.
Possible.
Just to beat this dead horse one last time. But the reason why I I actually wanna spend some additional time talking about the survey, and I don't know how many of you have the survey summary up and have looked at it recently, but I what, I just wanna read to you the last paragraph of that summary, which I presume was was written by union leadership. And it states, "A recurring theme in the comments is the pervasive fear among educators, particularly newer staff, of speaking up due concerns over job security and potential retaliation. While the M T A is seen as a source of support, there is a strong call for greater accountability and evaluation of district leadership, who are described as continuing, contributing to a toxic and emotionally harmful work environment. This perceived administrative dysfunction and suppression of open dialogue is seen as undermining the once positive culture of the district, highlighting the critical role the union plays in providing a counterbalance to a leadership team that many feel is unresponsive or even hostile." Now, I won't say what I think about that, that paragraph. Um, but I think that, you know, we need to realize, obviously, the union leadership put this together, and that's what we're responding to. Um, and you know, any hint of that that these sorts of things are are issues, we need to address head-on. Um, I would say with the, whoever authored this document, with, that we need to have that conversation probably sooner rather than later. So I think we need to talk about that. Horse is dead, though.
All right, move it off.
No.
I feel like that's a cat.
I mean, I I think it's kind of, I think we spent a good amount of time on kind of resetting capital plan, turf, you know, like a five-year plan of how we're gonna put it together and piece something. You know, um, I think I said before, you know, just even what, you know, what Masco looks like in twenty thirty-two, you know, it's gonna be a different place where we, what we start thinking of, you know, as I'm learning slowly, painfully, change is slow. So, you know, if we start putting pieces together now, I'd love to dig into that, because I think that's gonna be a hot topic of the town's.
Does that include clap mode, or what would we call it, the future of the classroom? Is that inclusive of that, or is that?
I wouldn't mind doing a bullshit bang if we have time, it's a, it's a, it's a big topic, right?
Big topic, yeah.
I was just gonna say, it's part of that, or maybe adjacent to it, is, is there a reason to at least review the strategic plan and think about areas to recalibrate or update?
You go hand in hand, right?
Yeah. I also think we need to think about, is the strategic plan strategically funded? Because if it's not, it's a bunch of great ideas, and they'll all go nowhere. So how do we think more strategically about making sure there is funding for this work and those investments can actually happen?
Other ideas.
Mitations.
I was actually gonna suggest setting some kind of a communications calendar, and I, I know it's a, it's a little messy the way I'm gonna say it, but I I'd like to think of the year coming ahead where there are certain deadlines that I can hit where I say I, but I mean us as a whole, but community relations, and we can hit out information and answer things and provide information with whatever is happening, whether it's budget or survey or changes in curriculum or whatever we're discussing here, and it kind of goes hand in hand with me wanting, like we've already talked here, having somebody other than administrators tell us what's going on, give us updates on things whenever we can. Like, having a response, having some kind of a representative here, if it's department head, if that's what it has to be, that's great, but going back to kind of what Melissa said, for me, I I have a hard time figuring out what the best solution is when I don't have the information from the people that are doing it every day as best we can. I know we're a school committee, and there are lines, and there are, there are, um, limits on who we can talk to and how we can get our information, but I would love to just have updates on a regular calendar where we know what's happening, where, like, that Friday information can go out, and we have a set communications calendar, so that when it's something as big as the budget, all of the other subcategories are already taken care of on an organized basis. So upcoming things that we have going on, if, whether it's turf or build, anything, just so we can set one overarching calendar.
I think it goes nicely with the agenda, we can like do a whole calendar and say, every, on this date, we'll have this come, and then we'll, art, you know, whatever you want.
Right, so it's set all the time.
It sets expectations for people giving you information, too, that they're not being surprised.
Right, they know every, like, the problems are every Friday, there, there's a set timestamp of when it's coming out and when they can expect it, so.
If you start the local newspaper, right, we're gonna do that.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you.
Something like that.
Fall, you know.
Just fall.
I don't think we need an icebreaker, because we're all the same committee.
Who's gonna come up with a good icebreaker?
I just said no icebreaker.
None.
Each other.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a luxury this year to have a veteran.
Opportunity to learn something weird about someone else.
Alstic shirts? Up to the. You have a last one, this. Wanna start at five?
I'm okay too. Are we okay to start at five?
Yeah.
Are we okay to start at five?
What day is it on?
Wednesday. We're seven.
Five thirty?
Thirty.
Five thirty is a little more palatable.
I'll get our work. Happy hour first.
For that.
Five thirty.
I'll be on two wheels. We'll begin the conversation.
Five versus off.
More inbox.
In the meantime.
Do you ever assume take our secure love?
Yeah, you will.
All right. If there's other things that pop in your mind.
It's a good list already.
They're really important, you know, otherwise, I think it's on. Mike, Adrian and I, Jeff to put together an agenda. Thank you for your emphasis. All right, back to you, Mike.
All right. Next up, we have the tentative agreement between the districts and the Association of Support Staff. There's a summary in there of the, sort of the highlights of the changes. It's a three-year collective bargaining agreement that was, would it be effective retroactively to this past July first? The color increases, three point seven, five, four, and then two, which is consistent with what we've done with our other union contracts. We've added the parental leave language that's consistent with our other unions, units. Added staff children, attending, maskonomit language that's also consistent with other bargaining units. Increase to four, three B from two hundred to four hundred dollars per year. And the union has gotten together and ratified this, this contract already. So we need school committee to vote to approve.
How many members?
Twelve.
I know we added the language for children of members of the administrative unit. I'm just getting worried, the more and more.
The, the committee has the ultimate decision on how many spaces they are going to have available for faculty. All faculty, teachers, administrators and support staff.
Do that on a. Not, we don't say like, oh, school choice, there's ten spots open, right? We do it as a faculty member comes to us, send us a letter, and we deliberate or what. And since I've been here, we've never said no.
There's.
There's one vote, no, Costa, all the time.
There have not been a lot of requests as it is.
That was going to be my question, is how many are there actually?
Not, I think it's, I want to say there's like four right now, just in the whole district.
It's not like it's overwhelming.
It's not a huge number.
We've had openings in our school choice numbers. Haven't we? We haven't maxed out ten every year, have we?
We have not in the past. I think this year we did.
This year? I was going to say, that's always an option where we don't necessarily have to include that, and our student, although not guaranteed, it's still not guaranteed because the committee still has the final say. The school choice would still be an option for that.
Yeah, I think this, but this year we had more than ten applicants for each, for.
They're primarily from Georgetown?
There's a large number from Georgetown, yes.
Sorry, from where?
Georgetown. We, we definitely, we had to do a lottery in both seventh grade and ninth grade.
Interesting.
I don't know who's going to, I mean, it's, the trick is, what happens is, there's, there's no deposit or anything, and so sometimes people just don't show up in September, and then, you know, then we'll start calling down the wait lists, but it's late for sure, but we won't know for certain who walks in until three weeks from now.
And we require a deposit?
Not for school choice, for sure.
We have a, a number for impacted budgets on this?
I don't have a number. It was exactly when the, the salary, the financial impact was what we were, are within the budget for next year. For this year, we're in it now. It's in the, it's in the budget doc. Yeah, Jeff was, Jeff was okay with it. I mean, he was at the table with me, so.
Yep.
What other units? Would, we didn't add this to the para contract.
This, you mean the children?
Children, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't add that to the power professionals.
Are there any other units that we perceive that this?
Only two, the, other than the power professionals, the MPFTs are the only other unit, and there's six members in that unit.
I'm just thinking after the budget year we've had. And I'm not saying one student breaks the bank, but it still is our town's tax dollars educating a child to a a child whose parents do not pay tax money into the school. And just because of the committee's practice of never saying no, I think I've only been a part of two, and I was a yes vote. I've since done some thinking after this budget cycle, like, maybe that's not our best option. So that, that piece of this contract just.
The way, the way it's written, the association will notify the committee by June first of each year the number of children of support staff who would like to attend. The committee will determine by June thirtieth, how many openings, if any, are available to children of support staff for the following year.
We're under no obligation to automatically accept.
Yes. If, no, you have to give, if there's, just keep going. The committee will provide the association with a ration, rationale for its decision. If there are more children than spaces available, a lottery will be conducted by the administration. It is agreed that once a child of the association member is enrolled as a student, they may continue to attend maskonomit until graduation, which is the same for school choice. So it's an annual process. You have basically two meetings to make decisions on.
Fair. If they live in Massachusetts, they are funding public education, maybe not to a degree as a resident. I mean, a New Hampshire resident obviously doesn't have any skin in the.
We can't do New Hampshire residents anyway.
But all Massachusetts taxpayers fund public education, so to some degree, their dollars are here.
They're not on the new roof HVAC system, turf field, or any of that.
Might be.
In the mall.
If we get to a partner state, get the MSBA, then their dollars are there too.
So motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Maskonomit Regional School District and the Support Staff.
Discussion. We don't have Joe, so all in favor? Against? Any abstain?
Thank you for the work on that.
Zero, zero. All right, where are we?
Look committees.
Subcommittees. Community relations.
Like I haven't been here in about a thousand years, so we will be scheduling a meeting very soon. This month, the next probably week or two, to catch up and get started.
There's not here anybody from DCI? Budget one comment.
Same, ditto.
Vocal?
We'll kick off this year, head of the offsite.
Sorry?
We'll, we'll kick off, you know, the goal setting, so nothing, no updates.
Policy?
I just sent you both an email for, or available, I'm away next week, but the following week and the one after that to meet, just send me your availability.
Is on updates?
I reached out to our FinCom just to start conversations and be connected. So, well, good conversations there, and we're continuing our practice of listening sessions once a month on weekends. So if anybody's listening in Topsfield, we're at the library on Saturday mornings once a month with members of the Black Board and the LRT School Committee usually, so good conversation. Bye.
So speaking of Topsfield, the FinCom met maybe several weeks ago, and it might have been a dinner meeting, and as you know, my wife is on it, and I was asked to give them some feedback. How the process went this year. And the key point that I made was that you know, we can't be operating with different set of facts. And this year we were. I mean, we had data that, that said very clearly certain things about, about staffing levels. And, and no matter how many times we shared that with FinCom, they just interpreted it differently. And, you know, led us to, you know, the problem that we ultimately had to overcome, and, you know, to our credit, we did. But it was way harder than it ever needed to, to be. And that we needed to work a lot harder going forward, that, you know, recognizing that earlier in the process, because, you know, I, I'll own part of that, because I, I, I didn't see that they were just, you know, had their blinders on and were you know, reading the same stuff that we were, interpreting it the same way. But, but, you know, we needed to be a lot more diligent moving forward to ensure that, well, this is the data, and we all got to agree, that's the data, and, and work with it, and not and not have any alternative sets of data that we're using to drive different conclusions.
We said how did that go?
I was told it was accepted, well, we'll see.
And updates from Middleton? Are your negotiations?
We're just done. We're done with all the contracts. I got a couple updates, and we didn't have it on the report on there, but I've got a couple of finishes to.
Great.
You ready? All right. So we're excited that we're going to announce the launch of a new website. Uh, it's going to be hosted by Final Site. The redesigned website will elevate our district's online presence and make it easier for parents, students and community members to find important information. I want to thank IT Department Member Matt Riley. Matt used to work on meetings. He's worked diligently to ensure that all the content from the old site has been reviewed, transferred and brought up to date to align with the new structure and functionality. The redesigned site features a modern, mobile-friendly layout, enhanced navigation, a stronger search tool and dedicated sections for each school. Uh, the homepage showcases the district's news and events, providing visitors with the latest updates and important information. The redesigned website will go live on Friday, August first, at the same web address, www.maskonomit.org. Very nice. I've seen the dummy version of it. It looks pretty good. As we last updated the school committee in June, on Turf Field, Stantec was waiting a response from the Boxford Conservation Commission's peer reviewer. The response was delivered to Stantec on June twenty-fourth. Additionally, the Boxford Conservation Agent, the peer reviewer and Stantec conducted another site visit to review wetland delineations on July ninth. Uh, Stantec right now is due to submit its response to the peer reviewers' comments and to the site visit. That response in writing on July thirty-first. Uh, and they've asked for a continuance of our hearing with the Conscom until August seventh. So right now, that's where it stands, but I'm going to say it's likely that we're going to have to push that out till August twenty-first. To allow for all the members of our team to actually be present. I got a notice from council last week that she's going on vacation and won't be there for it, so I know we want her there, and Jeff and I will both be on vacation during that, so. So we're trying to push it out to August twenty-first. I haven't seen anything from Stantec yet for that request. So that's where it stands. I mean, really, to your point, things are glacial at this point.
Is that current view? Access, can we get that? Can you check with, with Conscom?
Conscom must have it. I think I could dig one up for you, though. It's, the first one was really long, and the second one was just as long.
Paying by the word?
Yeah.
Quick question. This may have been discussed at the last meeting, and I apologize because I wasn't here. You said attorney, so the person that was looking at that conflict was cleared and she was, oh, okay, so she is our attorney.
So our normal in-house counsel is very well qualified and able to represent us at this, at the Conscom. But she's, she's on vacation. She called me up and said, I can't do that, can we push it off? So.
Are we on that Stantec change order? Are we still in the middle of that? Are we running?
I would, I, I'd have to ask Jeff exactly where we are, but I think the, the response to the peer reviewer was probably going to eat up the hundred hours. And, and then another site visit that they had to do. So I don't, I don't know exactly, but I think it put a very substantial dent, if not use it all, the whole thing. And then update on our roof and HVAC project application. So this past Monday, Jeff Sands, HVAC technician Keith Sarosiac, and I participated in a conference call with the team from the Massachusetts School Building Authority regarding our application for a building-wide heat pump conversion and roof replacement project. On the call, we learned that the MSBA is reviewing our application, and they will conduct a site visit to Maskonomit later this month. Uh, we also learned that the MSBA Board of Directors will be making decisions regarding inviting school districts into the feasibility study phase of the process in late October of twenty twenty-five, so this fall. MSBA is currently reviewing ninety-six project applications. But this is a two-year funding round. If you guys recall, they moved to a two-year process, so it's right, just about double what they would normally get, I think, if you look at past years. Because of the large number of applications, they will be staggering the commencement dates for districts that have been invited into the feasibility phase. So if, we've kind of asked this question, we talked, talked with them about this specifically, this would allow us to potentially seek approval to borrow funds for the feasibility study at next May's annual town meetings. They would actually say your commencement, for us, they could set a commencement date in March, which would be, you know, the time the school committee would actually approve, you know, the borrowing of the funds. And then I think we have ninety days to have a town meeting to get the full approval and then the ballot question process, so. You know, if we, you know, that would, that would actually work. We wouldn't have to have a special town meeting or a special election to do this. So that was good. They said they were absolutely willing to work with us on that. If we're not invited to participate in this round of funding, the next window for submitting an application is the spring of twenty twenty-seven. Because it's two.
I'm sorry, it's been a while since I remember looking at all this stuff, so. Feasibility study, so we get accepted into the program, it's just funding for the feasibility.
That's the way they do this. Yeah, they do. So the feasibility phase, you would get, we would get assigned an owner's project manager and a designer
Yep.
by the MSBA. It's roughly, they expect that from, you know, the invitation to feasibility to completing the feasibility, feasibility stage is a fourteen-month process, and so you'd be looking at you know, if this would happen in town meeting in twenty twenty-six, then town meeting of twenty-seven. If everything went well, we would be looking for the actual construction funding.
And would, by getting into the feasibility phase, would the MSBA, would that indicate that we'd be getting into a, a construction and funding phase?
They, they don't promise that, but that's generally how it works. They, they always say it's not, we're not making a commitment to actually do the construction, but, I mean, they're going to spend the money for us to do a design and everything. And have a full-on, you know, design and, you know, cost estimates on a project. So it's usually, as long as, as long as we do everything they tell us to do, usually goes that way.
Come back to the billion dollars.
Yeah, but they also kind of write in the contract that says we're not promising that we're doing shit, so.
We have a good understanding criteria, right?
Of the criteria for acceptance.
Next six applicants on.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, they, they come out, you know, they do their homework. They said they're going to spend most of the day here. You know, Keith's going to kind of lead that tour, and we're going to go top to bottom. Um, you know, Keith's, you know, kind of lead that tour and we're going to go top to bottom and look at the roofs. Look at the, you know, the HVAC units, look at the the boiler rooms, things like that. Look at our electrical service. Um, yeah, they they actually have consultants that lead the, from MSBA, they've contracted with experts to come come and do the walkthrough and look at it. Uh, you know, I think if they wind up, you know, if they have more projects than they have money for, then they'll start limiting, you know, so you said the roof, you know, they said the roof had to be at least twenty years old in this round. But if they don't have enough money, they may move that cutoff to twenty five or thirty years. We just don't know.
That boiler.
I don't know. Yeah. I mean, that's the whole thing. It's just showing the red pegs, units on the roof that, you know,
Yeah.
that we had a replace, or we actually replaced that one with things like that and just showing them, yeah, the boilers and the HVAC, the big HVAC boxes on the roof that, you know, right dying. So. And then the roof itself, I mean, we're actually doing some roof work in the next couple of weeks. So we're just trying to fix that, fix, fix what what's leaking as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, consent agenda. Approval of June eighteen twenty twenty five meeting minutes warrants the amount of seven million, six hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred ninety seven dollars and fifty eight cents. And the acceptance, uh, acceptance of a football booster donation.
Moved.
Okay. In favor?
I go.
Yes. Any of.
Yeah, can I abstain as to the agenda? Yes, but no, it has.
And you don't have to actually, even if you weren't here.
And thank you to football.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to football. All right, uh, does anybody want to?
Motion to adjourn.
Favor? I abstained. Eight fifty six P M.
Yes.
It'll be real all night.
Hey.
Start off.